If I could have your attention, please. I now have six o'clock. I hereby call the Monday, December 9th, 2024 Patrick County Board of Supervisors Business Meeting to Order. If everyone would please stand, and I would ask the Reverend Joey McNeil of Pleasant View Baptist Church to lead us in the indication.
Father, we are thankful to you for your goodness. We thank you for communities like our community here, for this county, and all who reside here, and Lord, for those who lead. We pray tonight in this meeting that your Spirit would guide, that you'd grant wisdom in every decision made, and to God above all, that this time of year, we remember the greatest gift of all is your Son, Jesus Christ. Now, bless and guide us through this night in Jesus' name. Amen.
Ms. Robery, would you kindly lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, a moment of silence in recognition of the U.S. Military serving here and abroad in all of public safety. So, welcome to the Patrick County Board of Supervisors Meeting where our local governing body convenes monthly or bi-monthly to address community matters that are under the purview of the Board. We uphold civility as a cornerstone of our proceedings and expect all attendees to conduct themselves accordingly. There is always opportunity for public engagement, including scheduled public comment and additional public hearings on specific agenda items. We encourage active participation from our residents. In addition to these meetings, your Board of Supervisor representative is readily available for communication by email and/or phone outside of the formal session. Please be advised that outburst or disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. We aim to maintain a respectful and productive environment for all attendees. Thank you for your cooperation and involvement in shaping the future of our community. And with that, we'll move into our regular session. The approval of our meeting agenda. First of all, do we have anything to add?
We have no changes.
I'd like to add a couple of items. I'd like to have a discussion about FOIA processes under new business and a discussion about the county administrator in closed session.
All right, so I've got those additions. Do I have a motion to...
It's on move.
Second. Let's have a motion and a second to approve the meeting agenda with those changes. Call for a vote, Mr. Marshall.
I'm not having prior notification of these things. I think it's getting a little carried away how we keep getting these things added right at the meeting, and obviously at least one of these is going to be contentious. And I think, yeah, I think we have a right and responsibility to let everybody know this, what we're going to be bringing up instead of, like what happened last time with the EMS, so I'm going to abstain.
Can we discuss it but not take action?
I'll still abstain from this vote.
Okay.
I think it's a courtesy that I know at least, you know, five, five days ahead of time.
Okay. All right, Mr. Kendrick.
Aye.
Mr. Wood.
Aye.
Mr. Robery.
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well. Next, we have the approval of meeting minutes from November the 18th, 2024. Any discussion or a motion?
I move to accept.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, call for a vote, Mr. Marshall.
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick.
Aye.
Mr. Wood.
Aye.
Mr. Robery.
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well. Next, we have the approval of bills, claims, and appropriations. Any comments or a motion? So, I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Call for a vote, Mr. Marshall.
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick.
Aye.
Mr. Wood.
Aye.
Mr. Robery.
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well. All right. Now, moving on to the public hearing. Patrick County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing tonight and to amend the fiscal year 2324 budget with an increase of 2.2 million towards our CSA. Do we have any, any background on that? Do we have any questions from the Board?
Was this advertised for two weeks?
Yes, we voted to hear this last...
It required 10-day notice.
I thought we, we agreed to hear that 500 and some thousand, not 2.2 million.
The 500,000 is our portion, the rest of it's the state's portion. There's a bit of confusion there. It's just under 500,000. Or we could not do that, and then we could pay the entire 2.2 million.
Yeah, I'm well, well aware of that, but I just don't quite understand all of this. The revenue side of it, which I don't guess you need to get into discussion now, just the main thing is it was advertised for two weeks in local paper, but, but, I don't know. I don't think it was.
We, we voted for the public hearing last, last meeting.
Only 500 and some thousand, but I don't, and I thought we was going to get some backup or explanation on some of this, so.
Any questions to ask? We've got...
I think we need a presentation on what these funds entail.
You got one?
Okay. So, last month, of course, we asked for the increase in the budget due to the increase in the number of children served. So, that's when we had, you know, discussed there was a steady increase in fees charged by vendors plus the steady increase in the number of clients. And actually, when we were here last month, I think it was 68, and since then, they updated at the state, and it says 76 children have been served. That includes foster care, that includes CPS for prevention, that includes cases from the schools, cases from the Community Services Board, cases from the Court Services Unit who serve children that are at risk. So, they've either been removed or at risk of being removed and have either history of abuse and neglect.
So, that's the entire 2.2 million?
Yeah, so it serves the kids and their families. So, the services can be case management, childcare, clothing, education, because they can be placed residentially, so we have to pay for their education, maintenance for foster care, mentoring for kids in the community, parent aides, psychological evaluations and psychosexual evaluations, and parental capacity evaluations that are ordered by the courts, room and board therapy, and other types of treatment as it may come up.
And that's to finish out the rest of the year?
Yes, hopefully so.
So, we've already appropriated 3.3 million?
No.
According to the budget, we've appropriated 3.3 million?
I thought it was 1 point something for the 2425. I think that 3.3 is what was spent for the 2324 year.
What's currently appropriated is on page 48 of your bills claims packet. It's 1.841 million.
Well, the expenditure budget that's posted online shows 3.3 million to Department of Social Services.
That's...
Yeah, this is CSA, not DSS. So, we're essentially increasing almost the entire amount of our Department of Social Services budget to fund this?
No, sir, that's CSA, not DSS.
Yeah, I'm C, it's, it's the Children's Services Act and not DSS budget. It's its own budget.
Why was this not included in the budget to begin with?
So, the original budgets, there has been, there was like an interim director, there was no CSA coordinator. I think they were doing it based on previous years.
So, was that CSA that did not budget for that? I mean, I'm wanting to know why, why is this coming up now in the middle of the year?
Because we went from serving, over the last couple of years, we went from serving like 25 kids per fiscal year till now it's 76 for 24, and as of right now, we have served 52 for the fiscal year that started on July 1. So, there's no way to predict how many.
So, you're talking about roughly $29,000 per child?
Yeah, if that's what that divides out, too. Some children are in some expensive residential placements due to behavioral and educational needs, and some are receiving, you know, lesser expensive services in the community.
Man, just to be straight, is it 1,706,000 is coming from state funding? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
100,000 from the transfer station, 200,000 ambulance services, 194 from reserves.
That's right. I estimate, looking at year-to-date revenue for the transfer station and our ambulance services, I expect us to finish out the year that much more than we budgeted. So, that's money that goes into the general fund that can help fund this request. But we don't have accounted for is 194 that would need to come from reserves should we not get enough revenue through the end of the year to cover that 194,000.
The transfer station, too, it usually loses money.
Well, the transfer station is still losing money, but I expect the revenue to be more than we originally budgeted, based on what we've received so far this year.
And we also expect to have an extra 100 or 200,000 in ambulance services revenue?
Correct.
And we didn't budget for that?
We didn't budget that much in revenue, no. We were using a new billing company and with the changes in staffing.
I have reservations against using ambulance services funds when we have an EMS problem as it is in this county.
What it just does is go into the general fund to be used for the purposes of the county. That part of the EMS is already funded for with what we currently...
I understand that, but I think if we're generating ambulance services revenue, that needs to stick with the EMS program.
But there's no way we did, we don't earmark, it all goes into the general fund to help pay all the general fund expenditures. We don't have earmarked a portion of the general fund just for EMS, because they're feeding off the rest of the general fund revenue as well.
So, if we go back to the roughly 2.2 million dollars, that'll get us through July 1st, correct? Is that your year?
June 30th, yep.
June 30th, right. So, so really, we're helping 76 kids for seven months for 2.2 million dollars. Because we've already, we're good up to now, we're just short from now to, is that pretty close to right?
Yeah, I think November has not been paid.
Okay.
And so, it would cover November through June.
So, eight months, okay.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I'm the first one to go help the kids, but to be off by 2.2 million dollars after only a handful of months, that's a pretty hard hit for us as well, if you know.
Right.
Yeah, how long have you been in this?
I have been working with CSA since April of this year.
So, not very long.
No, so I was not involved in the budget.
Part of that time, this board, not this board, the city board at the time, required the DSS director to be the CSA director, or the CFP director, correct?
Correct.
And this is the same director that people on this board and other boards have said tried to lay the blame on just one person for the last seven years of dysfunction in both DSS and CSA in the county. That's not us, you, that's a state. Also, a lot of this, if I understand, attending every meeting this year at the CFP, I understand that there was a lot of billing that wasn't turned in because of these staffing issues.
Correct.
And chickens come off the roof.
Correct. There were some facilities that had not been paid for months, so there was approximately like 100 and, almost 134,000 that came out at the beginning of this fiscal year to pay for the end of last fiscal year.
So, a lot of this comes from overturned positions and change of positions and getting called up from previous?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, we need this two-point, I'm sorry, ours is, what's the number, just shy of 500,000? Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
That would need to be between now and the end of your year, which is June 30th, right?
Yes, sir.
Not between now and December 31st?
Right.
So, right now, we're just estimating our needs between now and then.
Yes.
So, really, we don't have to, at this point, approve the 500-ish thousand dollars. We could, you know, do it a few times between now and then, because I believe in giving money where it's needed, but I don't want to throw lots of extra out there if, you know, if you have less people, if you have more people, you know, that's just kind of the way I look at it, because we got, what, eight months left to take care of that. That's just my quick opinion of it.
So, where does the state funding come in? So, do we have to, when do we have to commit before the state will commit?
Yeah, so the county has to commit to their portion before the state...
Will release their portion.
Will release theirs.
And we can't do that incrementally?
It becomes more difficult, because we have to request like supplemental requests from the state. So, then, we would technically have to go through this whole process each time to request the funds, which delays, you know, getting folks paid and getting those services in place.
What do you suppose would happen with these vendors if they don't get them?
Well, they have the right to tell us to pick kids up, which means there would be kids sleeping at DSS.
And some of these kids, I mean, like I said, I've invited everybody here for the entire year to come to DSS, to come to CFP meetings, so they could hear for themselves what this is about. Some of these children are really, really, have some serious problems.
Yes, sir.
Serious care that has to be taken care of. And this, this kind of, and I understand, Jonathan, I understand what you're saying, but I would submit that even myself, sitting here for a year listening to this, I don't have the expertise to make those kind of decisions. What I do know is this is the kind of thinking that got us in problems, in troubled purpose. At some point, the state could just turn around and say, no more supplementals. That's it. Some of these companies haven't been paid, and there'd be a variation. So, I believe that, you know, this is a thing very, very seriously about this. This isn't, this isn't just a simple matter of money in, money out. This is repairing things that have been done in the past and taking care of the most vulnerable people in our community. If we don't handle this correctly, the dominoes could fall again, and we could be in a great deal more trouble to the tune of millions of dollars.
The way I see it is we're six months into their budget, and they're over halfway off. I mean, we're, we're $2 million short six months into it.
Okay, but you understand...
I hate to try to figure out what it's going to be six months down the road.
Right, that's why you have a financial staff. Again, the director's only been there since April, okay? There is no way that you're going to have an accurate assessment coming out of the problems that we have, which is only since, well, we'll just say it.
Exactly. We're not going to have an accurate assessment, and therefore, we shouldn't throw the money at them until we have incrementally. I know it's more paperwork, I understand that, but why are we going to throw, like I said, give the money where it's needed if they come out that they only have 50-some kids here in a couple of months, God willing, hopefully we have none. But I just don't see, when you're halfway off on the budget, to, to hope that you're going to predict what you need for the last half of the fiscal year.
So, if, so let's say best-case scenario, number served goes down, we don't have the numbers, and we don't use all of this. Is that something that can be rolled over to go back into next year's budget, or is that something that can go back?
No, it would just go unspent this year, and we would start fresh July 1.
Okay, so that any money that's left over, what happens there? Does that go back into...
It just is unspent budgeted funds.
Okay.
I think it would be better for us to use reserve funds instead of the ambulance services funds, because we're going to have a lot of expenses that we're going to be looking at in the very near future with EMS, and I would prefer for us not to take any funds away from that.
Any unspent ambulance revenue that comes in will just go into our reserve balance at the end of June, not specifically earmarked for EMS, because there's no EMS, EMS fund.
And so, if that's needed in any EMS, it would come out of the general fund or the reserve?
Correct.
Any other questions or discussion? If nothing else, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And do I have a motion?
Yes.
So, yeah, thank you for reminding me. I don't have anybody signed up for the...
Oh, okay. Well, I'm going to make the motion to approve that.
To approve our portion, which is just under 500,000?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
So, I have a motion and a second. We'll call for a vote, Mr. Marshall.
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick.
Mr. Wood.
I'd like to see it done incrementally, so no.
Mr. Robery.
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well, motion carries. So, thank you all. Thank you, CSA. Thank you for your work. I know it's, it's difficult. All right, next, public comment. So, public comment offers citizens the opportunity to address the Board either in person or in writing on matters relevant to the responsibilities of the Board. To maintain a respectful and constructive environment, please adhere to the following guidelines. Addressing the Board, please direct all comments to the Board as a whole, refraining from addressing individual Board members or employees of the Board or county. Respectful conduct, personal attacks, as well as the use of insulting, profane, or vulgar language will not be tolerated. Scope of Topics, comments should pertain to issues within the purview of the Board and local government. Topics beyond the Board's control or unrelated to local governance are not appropriate for public comment. Question and Answer, public comment is not a question-and-answer session. Board members will not respond to questions during public comment without permissions from the Chair. Enforcement, the Chair may rule a speaker out of order for violating these rules. Upon a second violation, the speaker may be removed from the podium. Eligibility, only residents of Patrick County or property owners in county are eligible to address the Board during the public comment period. Time Limit, each speaker will be allocated three minutes for their comments. However, if multiple citizens wish to address the Board on the same issue, they may appoint a spokesperson to speak for up to five minutes, provided they forfeit their individual speaking slots. The Chair's Authority, the Chair has the authority to manage the time allocated for public comment, including limiting the number of speakers, shortening speaking time, or waiving any public comment provisions as deemed necessary. The Sign-Up Procedure, a sign-up sheet will be available on the podium for citizens to register to speak. Speakers will be called in the order of sign-up, and additional speakers may be accommodated if time permits. Submission of Comments, speakers may provide comment, copies of their comments to the clerk for inclusion in the meeting minutes. Thank you for your cooperation in maintaining a respectful and productive public comment session. And with that, we've got Ms. Rhonda Pruitt.
I have one of these for each of you. My name is Rhonda Pruitt, and I'm the Director of the Patrick County Community Food Bank. I'm here tonight to ask for your consideration of our request for funding in the next year. Each year, we complete the required paperwork, which I emailed to each of you earlier today, and each year, we receive nothing. I want to impress on you the importance of giving to the nonprofits in the area, most specifically, the food bank. The food bank was incorporated November 2nd, 2006. We received our tax-exempt status on December 19th, 2006. Our mission was simple, to eliminate the cries of hunger and poverty in our county. Since 2006, our budget has grown considerably. We are spending between $5,000 and $10,000 per month for food. We are members of Feeding America, and we do purchase some of the food through them. To date, we have spent almost $40,000 with Feeding America. This total does not include any food that we purchased from Walmart, Food Country, or our ground beef supplier. We do not get special pricing for those items either. Our Thanksgiving boxes contained items that will complete a Thanksgiving meal, including the turkey, just for Thanksgiving. Turkeys, we almost, we spent almost $7,000 on turkeys for people to have for Thanksgiving. Had it not been for us, some people may not have had a Thanksgiving. Had it not been for us, some people may not have had a Thanksgiving. Are you aware that the average person on social security could qualify for $23 in food stamps a month? In today's economy, what's that going to buy? Our county is primarily an older generation. These people have set the stage for our county through their years of employment and paying taxes. Some of these people continue to give through monthly donations to the food bank, even when they have so little. These people are a large portion of our clientele. I have provided you with a handout showing some interesting facts about the food bank and what we do. We have distributions in ARAT and Medusa Dan, and we prepare the backpacks for the children at the high school. We also help the Patrick Springs Pentecostal Holiness Church Food Ministry. They receive our perishable items donations that we pick up from Walmart and Dollar General. We have provided assistance to families from the high school, the elementary schools, and social services. We provide food for the residents at the Horizons group home in Stewart. I want to reiterate the fact that myself, nor none of my volunteers, which are some here, y'all guys stand up, none of us are paid. We all do this for the same reason, because of the love in our heart for our county. We think y'all should share that, too.
Thank you, Ms. Pruitt, and thank you all, all of you all, for the great work that you do. Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Ed Poole from Blue Ridge District. Mr. Poole.
Don't you see I could give her a copy of the?
Yes, sir.
My name is Edward Poole from the Blue Ridge District. Firstly, welcome to the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Overby. I hope your election will bring about a balance to the board to place the public interest, desires, and safety first and foremost above all else. Over the last 18 months, many have witnessed disturbing trends of some board members abandoning the desires of their district constituents in favor of commercial interests, while never producing any chain of liability documentation for manufacturers, potentially creating extreme liabilities, which could cost this county millions, if not tens of millions of dollars in legal fees alone, in order to pursue damage recovery. We have witnessed the county administrator moving legitimate planning commission functions to be handled by an outside consulting firm, whose talent pool would not have made it through the first-round screening process in any organization I've either worked for or led as a senior executive. These actions clearly demonstrate the lack of managerial experience, which is gained by years of work experience, not conveyance of title, resulting in the fifth estate being forced to file a four-year request, revealing how serious the internal disagreements have been. I feel qualified to render an opinion on this situation, having worked with local, provincial, national, and international news agencies, including the Roanoke Times, Franklin County News Post, Potomac Tech Journal, New Zealand Herald, Sydney Morning News, Canadian Broadcasting Corporation, and the world-class Wall Street Journal, to name but a few. The press, when dealt with openly and fairly, is an ally. I now fear that the four-year process is being weaponized as a means of obfuscating the public's right to know, a clear sign in the breach of representative government and the creation of an adversarial relationship, which never ends well for any of the parties involved. Therefore, I would request the following actions be taken. The cap limit on four-year requests of $22.50 per hour. Full background checks for all senior management, including the Board of Supervisors, with the press reviewing and publishing all results from Pacer Systems searches and other public sources, as they deem necessary. A full forensic audit of all county books for the last seven years. A formal apology to the Enterprise Newspaper for previous open comments of a derogatory or possibly slanderous nature. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pruitt. All right, next, we have Ms. Trina Anderson from Peters Creek District. Ms. Anderson.
Trina Anderson of Peters Creek. Only a fascist mentality attacks citizens and refuses free speech. Public servants are not dictators. They owe constituents explanations. Two members of this board constantly display disdain for citizens and taxpayers. You weren't elected to do whatever you want. You were elected to listen to your constituents, represent their desires, and to be held accountable for your actions and decisions. Citizens have the right to a say in public process. Policies and decisions should be developed in the public arena, not in private emails and texts. For your information, every one of those texts and emails are owned by the citizens of Patrick County. There is absolutely no reason for private texts and emails relating to any county business. There are two supervisors' meetings scheduled every month. The second meeting is a work meeting. That meeting is supposed to be used for your discussions between the five of you and your county administrator. Why is the work meeting rarely held? Each of you is paid to hold that meeting and to attend. Discussions of issues are the backbone of creating public policy, as well as creating public trust and transparency. One of the FOIA texts states, quote, "I know we can't meet as a group, but we do need to talk about things before an open meeting." It then says, "We do need to come up with a way to talk." The answer to that is simple: Hold your work meeting monthly. Nothing is to be withheld from the public. Another quote from one of the texts, "So now people can fuss, can raise a fuss, and will change our mind." The statement proves that a couple of supervisors simply don't get how government works. People are allowed to raise a fuss. We have the right to redress government at every level. Civic engagement is the foundation of our government. All government is public process. One quote that's terribly upsetting in the texts, "My personal opinion, why should we expect any staff to invest here if they're going to be talked about, treated like this?" Excuse me? Everyone in this room tonight is invested in Patrick County. We're forced to deal with a disdain, pardon me, from some county employees and members of this board. This is our home. We pay taxes. We pay the salaries and perks. What a truly disrespectful thing to say. Every head of every department should be required to live in Patrick County and invest. That increases the tax base and keeps our tax money here in Patrick County. Another text spoke of fairness to one county employee. Is the Board of Supervisors supposed to be fair to only one county employee, but not the 17,500 citizens who live here and pay taxes? Those who can't seem to understand why so many people from Patrick County are unhappy, they really need to take a hard look at themselves, at their own actions and behaviors.
Ms. Anderson, if you please.
"The verbal assault on Mr. Gilbert last month's meeting was despicable. The offending supervisor should be removed immediately."
Thank you. All right, next, we have Karen DeCappe from Smith River District. Ms. DeCappe.
Karen DeCappe, Smith River. On the public meeting of May 13th, a meeting about the county budget, many board members felt more work needed to be done. The county administrator went over the budget. One BOS member noted many things on the page had been decided to be taken off during a committee meeting, i.e., the common sense detail HVAC, HVAC maintenance going with a lower bidder than a higher one. The current CA said the budget was the result of more than three months of work, and its intention was for the best for the county now and in the future. Yet the ambulance did not make the budget. Though one member commented on this occurrence, there should have been a concern to all. As continual concerns are raised about EMS and rescue squads, on September 18th, the new facilities director said the priority list for the county administrator was uniforms. Uniforms. When questions were raised about a paid vehicle and residents of a new hire, legitimate concerns directly affecting citizens, inner texts were revealed, and the CA texted, "My personal opinion, why should we expect any, any staff to invest here if they are going to be talked about and treated like this?" Suddenly, the best for the county fell into oblivion. In the current county administrator contract, her salary must increase each year as granted to other county employees, which only incites more new high-paid salaries be formed and be passed on to a struggling taxpayer county depleting in population. Though the CA's pocketbook is elevated, the county and the average taxpayer will not be. Also in the contract for the current CA, with thought, a term was made, all communications of supervise county employees must solely go through her. The taxpayers of PC, 20% who, who live under the poverty rate, must fork up $500 for a vehicle, pay for both a tablet and laptop to use outside the office, and have enrollment and membership dues paid for in at least four organizations, with all travel included. I'd argue with this mindful stipulation, further courses to bolster power aren't necessary. Need it really be said, Board of Supervisors, you have been relegated to being an underling. More than perception is reality. The proof is in the pudding. And yet, as the regular folks voice the blatant lack of common sense and failure of leadership, they are shouted down, disregarded, and faced with anger. Take heed and consideration to the hardships of this county, and your own standing, your anger is displaced. Thank you for this time, and God bless Patrick County in 2025 with righteousness and truth.
Thank you, Mr. DeCappe. Next, we have Mike DeCappe from Smith River District.
I originally had a, a different lead-in to try to make my point, but I think the board did an excellent job of setting the table for me tonight. Speaking about our new $2.2 million budget shortfall, Mr. Overby correctly anticipating more EMS expenses moving forward. I have to ask, why in the world are we adding administrative management positions in this financial climate that we're in now? And I want, I want to make it perfectly clear, I have nothing against the facilities manager individually. I'm sure he's qualified, hardworking, and I thank him for his service to our country. Is this position necessary? We have department heads that are capable of communicating with, with the administrator. This, by all appearances, is, is an information conduit. It's a middleman. Then, we were in the position of staffing a new countywide fire chief, and may still be in the process of doing that. Once again, departments have chiefs. They're all capable of communicating and coordinating. Once again, we have an information conduit. We have a middleman. Now, I understand there's a, there's a push or a desire to move real estate assessments up a year. Well, we all know how that story ends. Higher assessments, higher tax bills. I understand the administrator needs authority over personnel decisions. I don't think that should extend to growing the employee base, to creating new positions. Now, if this is a contractual issue, I would urge the board to explore any steps necessary to amend that portion of the administrator's contract, so that no expansions can be made without your knowledge or express consent. Growing the size of county government doesn't grow the county. Doesn't attract business. It doesn't attract residents. All it does is put a strain on already limited resources. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pruitt. Next, we have Ms. Lynn Sealy from Smith River District. Ms. Sealy?
Good evening. Welcome, Mr. Overby, to the Board of Supervisors. I wish you well. I thank each and every one of you up here tonight for what you're trying to do in this county. I'm not prepared with a speech. I have nothing written down. I'm just going to talk to you from my heart. I've been coming to these meetings on and off, and I'm starting to come a little bit more. And what I witnessed at the last meeting was disgusting. I think a lot of us were upset with some of the behaviors that went on, the rudeness that goes on, the communication or the lack of communication that goes on between the board and the citizens of this county. I love this county. I've been here for 14 years with my husband. I love the people of this county. They're kind. They've been very giving. And I see a lot of, a lot of stuff going on here that's real uncomfortable, and it's just not nice. We should be a county of integrity, a place to be proud, a place that we are proud of all of you that sit up here and direct this county. And I'm not real proud, honestly. Before I stepped into this meeting, I just happened to be on the phone with a girlfriend who's a resident of this county. And she's, I said, "I'm going to the Board of Supervisors meeting," and she said, "Huh, I heard they're pretty rude to everybody." That's the word on the street, okay? That's the, it's sad. That's the word on the street. That's what people are thinking. That ain't good. That's not why you should be up here. We have a right to say how we feel about things. We have a right to express that, and we shouldn't be judged on it. And I feel like that we are judged, that we're a group of, oh, no. And that is not right. We're here for, for everyone's good. And I agree with everybody that sat up here tonight and spoke. And I just hope and pray that each and every one of you just take this to heart, that we all love this county, too, and this behavior that's going on is just intolerable. And it's just disgusting, really, the way that people are being treated. Thank you.
Next, we have Chris. Is that awesome? I'm sorry, I can't.
Awesome, sounds great. Awesome. No, it's Chris Hughes with, uh, I'm not sure what district I've been, I mean, I'm. Thank you so much. Been there for 10 years. I'm a missionary. My family's a missionary family here in Patrick County. And I'm here to actually speak and to support the food pantry for Patrick County and just the work that they're doing there. Of course, as you guys can imagine, and again, I don't know everybody's situation in the room, but I know we've got a handful of agents of the light in the room here. And, and they are a light in a dark, dark place. And I'm going to tell you right now, as somebody who is in the ministry work, there's not a lot of money in it. And there are months where the Lord just provides and ways, and He provides it through people. And for my family specifically, He provides through the Patrick County Food Pantry. And again, just want to put a sandwich on that, that any support, again, we, we have been here for 10 years for, you know, trying to restore a ministry over in that district. And we have done that by traveling up to 3,000 miles a month beyond this community to raise that support, to restore this place. And we're just about done with it. And like I said, I just praise the Lord for what they do, the people that are there, and it's not about what they're given. It's more about the relationships and the, the sense of community that they provide. I look forward to those conversations every month, just the love, just the hugs, and just, just the feeling that my family's being cared for from this community. And I think it would be an awesome opportunity. And I think it would be an awesome opportunity, a layup opportunity, for the county to financially support in some way, some even just some minor way to support what that's doing, and just thinking about how many families, children, you know, and families like mine that are impacted by things like that, and then the other people that they support. So, thank you for your time, thanks for what you do.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Thank you for all you do. And next, we have Mr. Galen Gilbert from Peters Creek. Mr. Gilbert?
Seems to be a reoccurring nightmare of me coming, but just like y'all say, my passion for this county is way, way up there. My family's been here since the 1700s, so I'm very passionate about this county. And like I said, we need to have transparency across the board, from the administrator, the employees, we need to know who works for whom around here. And needless to say, last meeting, after the meeting was over, I was told that by members of the board, that they hoped I had the balls to say what I say when the county administrator's here. And I will. I just got to the age now that I don't have that filter between my head and my mouth, and I want to tell you what I think. And I have caught wind last week that a member of this board is discussing my disability in public. And if you want to know what my disability is, come talk to me. I'll tell you all about the doctor that butchered me up, and we proved him negligent. So, it's not from me being fat, it runs in my family on my handyside, and I got it honestly. But if you want to know about me, call me, I'll talk to you, I'll give you the time, because that's the way we work things out, with communications. And at this point in time, some of the communications I see is disgusting. And we need to be upfront with everybody in this county, because we all pay taxes, whether it's personal property or it's your land, one or the other. So, we all pay taxes. When I got my tax bill this time, I about messed my pants. And that's just on a vehicle and my mobile home, which they consider that personal property, they don't list it as a house. And I just thought I want to come up here and give a little bit of spiel about my family from here. We come here many, many years ago, back in the 1700s. Matter of fact, on my mom's side, the family owned Lover's Leap and all the land up and around it from a land grant. And of course, over the years, that got traded off and stuff like that, so like everything else around here, once your taxes get so high, you can't afford to keep your land, you got to sell it. And that's not good, because like I said, some of us have been here a long, long time. And like I said, if you need to ask me about my disability, come to me. But if you're doing it in the background and I find out and it's a heap of violation, that's a $10,000 fine. So, don't think I won't burn you on that one, because that's my business, that's none of any of y'all's business at all whatsoever.
And also, I know, going back with your thing, of course, time's up, but going back to you and your family, I know you spent a lot of times back in the day running rescue in circles, County Wales.
I'd run eight, 900 hours a month.
I believe it.
And I've saved a lot of people, and...
I've been there and saw you.
Yeah.
We appreciate it.
So, you know, if you have questions, the word is communications. Talk to us, we'll talk to you, sometimes we get ill. So, like last week, I got, our last meeting, I got a little ill, but when I see somebody not paying attention, I do get ill. So, God bless Patrick County, I love this county, and I don't see going anywhere else. Thank you.
That's the last of the public comment, and moving on to new business, we have Ms. Lisa Brandon about the Blue Ridge Parkway and storm damage in Mayberry Mill update. Thank you for being here. I'm sorry, before you get started, my apologies, I have one side on the public comment piece. I believe you're right, I do owe the enterprise an apology, both the editor and the employees for referring to them as a tabloid, and I do apologize for that remark. Anything from the other board members? Public comment? All right, I'm sorry, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Perry. We're going to get some slides queued up here, and then we'll get started. I'm sure. We are going to have some slides over here on the wall, because everybody, I don't know if anybody sitting here wants to get where they can see. I know this is, it's hard to do technology under while everybody's watching. I'll go ahead and get started. Okay, great. Good evening. My name is Lisa Brandon, and I serve as the Blue Ridge Parkway's External Affairs Specialist. I'm joined this evening by Rachel Stasny, the Parkway's Chief of Administration and Chief of Staff. Chairman Perry and Supervisors, thank you so much for the opportunity to provide a few Parkway updates this evening. As usual, there is much happening along the 469-mile route, and in the wake of Hurricane Helene's impacts to the park, along with transitions underway at Mayberry Mill, we wanted to proactively reach out and offer this update. Rachel, myself, and the entire Parkway team value our relationships with park neighbors, and we see local communities, including tourism organizations like the one led by Mr. Houchens, as a critical partner in delivering the park experience. And all but a couple of places along the entire Parkway, park neighbors provide the restaurants, the lodging, the shopping, the events, and more that round out a fun and memorable Blue Ridge Parkway experience. We're going to go through a few slides to provide a quick introduction to the park, I'll offer a glimpse of some of the work ahead related to storm recovery, and then Rachel will provide an update on the future of restaurant and retail operations at Mayberry Mill, along with a look at some of the maintenance projects on our to-do list there. Next slide. As we dig into our updates, it always feels important to offer a bit of context into how the Blue Ridge Parkway is managed. And one of the best ways to do that is with a reminder of our place in the National Park Service and our Bureau's mission. The Blue Ridge Parkway is one of 432 sites in the National Park System, which is part of the Department of the Interior, which is part of the executive branch of the federal government. And this is our mission, and we, past, present, and future Parks staff on the Parkway weigh all of our management decisions against this charge to preserve, unimpair the natural and cultural resources for this and future generations. The map on this slide also reminds us of the length of the Parkway, connecting Shenandoah National Park with the Great Smoky Mountains National Park. It is at its core a 469-mile design landscape that travels through 29 counties in Virginia and North Carolina. The Parkway was planned as a drive-a-wile, stop-a-wile experience, offering a series of a dozen or more developed areas along the way that provide various visitor experiences such as campgrounds, picnic areas, trail systems, museums, visitor centers, or park concessions. Next slide. On any given day and any given year, there are many moving parts on the Parkway. This slide is hard to read, but it offers a bit of Parkway by the numbers. There's a lot of information to digest, but the long and short of it is that managing the Parkway is complex, and there's never a dull moment. If you take a few minutes, you can kind of zoom in on some of the highlights of numbers that kind of drive our management day in and day out. Some additional numbers that are not on this slide include that in 2023, over 16 million visitors to the Parkway spent $1.3 billion in communities near the park. That spending supported 19,159 jobs across the region and had a cumulative benefit to the local economy of over $1.8 billion. Our current staffing levels hover around 130 permanent year-round staff dispersed across the 469-mile park, and we staff up in the summer by another 70 plus or minus seasonal positions. We do this work against a backdrop of a nearly $450 million maintenance backlog as one of the most infrastructure-heavy parks in the National Park Service system. Next slide. And then, on September 27th, things got even more interesting on the Parkway. In the 10 weeks since the remnants of Hurricane Helene traveled through western North Carolina and southwest Virginia, each and every member of the Parkway team has stepped up in some way, working long hours, managing complex situations at home and at work, and facing unprecedented challenges at every turn. We are figuring out a new rhythm now, and we know it will be a long road to full recovery. National Park Service personnel have cleared mountains of debris, conducted hundreds of facility and resource assessments, and reopened over 310 miles of the 469-mile route. We know of at least five dozen slides within the Parkway boundary. In addition to the slides in both North Carolina and Virginia, widespread tree fall, erosion, trail, and culvert damage occurred. In addition, many structures, both historic and nonhistoric, were heavily damaged. Critical drainage features that support public infrastructure were also compromised, and many significant cultural and natural landscapes were impacted. The remaining work along this scenic route is complex and will take time. Some of the more dramatic damage to the Parkway's primary roadway occurred in North Carolina. All of these photos are from North Carolina. Significant landslides occurred across approximately 200 miles of the Parkway, stretching from near the North Carolina-Virginia state line south to Mount Pisgah near Asheville. The landslides range in scale and scope, some slides occurred above the Parkway, some below, some taking out portions of the road, and some less obvious but compromising the integrity of the road or drainage systems. Next slide. The Parkway is open for normal traffic along all 217 of the miles in Virginia, but work remains. In the coming months, recovery work in Virginia will focus on roadway and drainage repairs, hazard tree work, woody debris removal, culvert cleaning, removing siltation from mill ponds, repairing damage to historic and nonhistoric structures, trail clearing, and cultural landscape and natural resource restoration. In early November, the Department of Transportation's Federal Highway Administration announced that $43 million of emergency relief funds would be provided for storm recovery to the U.S. Forest Service and the National Park Service. The Blue Ridge Parkway will receive $25 million of that $43 for stabilization, for emergency stabilization and repair work at 12 slides near critical transportation networks. That funding will also be used to address more debris removal and repair roadway guardrails in North Carolina. This is a new body of work that none of us was planning for, but we are committed to meeting the MPS mission as we tackle it. Fortunately, we have the support of so many across the region and at all levels of government. It is literally and figuratively a long road, but we can do it. Now, I'm going to turn things over to Rachel, who will lead us through an update on Mayberry Mill, which we know is of particular interest in this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Stasny, and I serve as the Chief of Administration and Chief of Staff for the Blue Ridge Parkway. Thank you again for your time this evening to share some information about Mayberry Mill, which we know is particularly special to the residents of Patrick County. This slide demonstrates our long history stewarding historic site and assets at Mayberry Mill, popular for its history and picturesque environment. Many of you know this place well, but for those who may not, facilities at Mayberry Mill include the historic grist mill, sawmill, and blacksmith shop, which were built shortly after the turn of the 20th century and restored to provide visitors a view of pioneer life in Appalachia. The Mayberry Mill area was purchased by the National Park Service in the late 1930s, and the mill was restored in 1945 when most of the farm buildings in the complex were moved to the site. In the 1990s, the mill was completely disassembled and rebuilt. In 2014, the mill was refurbished with new buckets and outer bands, and the pond was dredged. Four years later, the mill flame was replaced and new shake roofs were installed on historic buildings at the site with support from private donors and the Blue Ridge Parkway Foundation. There's also a restaurant and retail shop at Mayberry Mill, which has been operated by a third-party concessioner since the 1950s, and that is what we'll look at more in depth now. Next slide, please. One aspect of my portfolio as the Chief of Administration of the park is overseeing our commercial services program, which includes one historic lease, 50 or so commercial use authorizations, and seven concessions contracts, one of which is the Mayberry Mill Restaurant and Retail Store. Concessions in the National Park Service are run as private businesses by third-party operators and are governed by the Concessions Management Improvement Act of 1998. Concession operations must be considered necessary and appropriate services for National Park visitors. When the Parkway was designed and built almost 100 years ago, the needs and demands of the Blue Ridge Parkway visitors were much different, as were the services available off Parkway in our gateway communities. On this slide, you'll see how our concessions have changed over the Blue Ridge Parkway's history. In bold is a list of current Parkway commercial services, including Mayberry Mill, and a number of former concessions that are now closed are listed not in bold. The photo on top is the Bluffs Lodge, which closed in 2010 and is located in North Carolina, and the bottom photo is of the very first concession on the Blue Ridge Parkway, a sandwich shop at Cumberland Knob, which closed not long after World War II. Blue Ridge Parkway concessions are always evolving. As one example, the Parkway used to have gas stations dotting the Parkway, and now our visitors exit the Parkway to fill up in our gateway communities. As our local communities offer more lodging and dining options for our visitors, lodging and dining concessions on the Parkway become less necessary, which is not a bad thing, and our offerings have changed and will continue to change as a result. Next slide, please. That brings us to the concession at Mayberry Mill. I'm sorry, this slide is a little hard to read. This past summer, the Blue Ridge Parkway published the prospectus, or contract opportunity, for our next 10-year concessions contract for food and retail services at Mayberry Mill, and we unfortunately received no offers. What this means for the 2025 season is that our nonprofit bookstore partner, America's National Parks, formerly known as Eastern National, will continue to serve as the retail operator at Mayberry Mill, thankfully, but the restaurant will remain closed. As part of the concessions contract development process, the National Park Service determined that the contract did provide a reasonable opportunity for profit, which is a requirement for publishing, but a lack of offers indicates that the opportunity may no longer be attractive to potential operators. That said, it is customary to republish an opportunity when no bids are received, and we do plan to do that in calendar year 2025. As many of you know, we also offered temporary food truck or similar commercial permits at Mayberry Mill in 2024 and also received no takers, but we are open to the possibility of food trucks at Mayberry Mill again this season if there is interest. If we get no bids for the concession operations after a second attempt, we will discuss alternate plans for the future of Mayberry Mill Restaurant. Any possible options will meet all federal guidelines and will also align with National Park Service policy, the Parkway's general management plan, and of course, available financial resources. Next slide, please. We know another topic of interest, especially in local communities related to Mayberry Mill, is the state of the facilities. However, before we get to Mayberry Mill's main... However, before we get to Mayberry Mill's maintenance, it's important to take a minute to learn about the deferred maintenance and repair backlog on the Blue Ridge Parkway as a whole. The National Park Service is second only to the Department of Defense in the amount of federal infrastructure it manages, and as was mentioned earlier, the Blue Ridge Parkway is a very infrastructure-heavy park. Deferred maintenance and repair refers to maintenance and repairs of assets that have been delayed more than one year due to budget constraints. On the Parkway, our infrastructure is aging, and resources available for regular maintenance and adequate staffing are not always available to maintain good condition. This slide orients you to some of the assets in the Parkway's inventory that we're charged with maintaining from year to year, and as you can see in the middle of the screen, the Parkway's current maintenance backlog is an estimated $449 million. Next slide, please. The state of Mayberry Mill is a clear example of deferred maintenance along the Blue Ridge Parkway. We acknowledge that while many visitors to the Parkway still report great experiences at the site, local residents see a pond that needs dredging and historic buildings in disrepair. Longtime visitors, neighbors, and employees remember how it once was and are disappointed in its current condition, a condition that demonstrates the challenge of maintaining aging infrastructure with heavy visitation and a budget that hasn't increased significantly over time. The National Park Service continues to seek funding for needed repairs and high priority improvements for Mayberry Mill and other beloved sites along the Parkway, but it will not happen overnight. Despite over $2 million in investments in facilities and operations at Mayberry Mill in recent years, the list of projects on the screen highlights needs currently facing the site. And again, I'm sorry, the slides looked a little different on our screen, so I'm sorry they're harder to read. The good news is that we're working with our philanthropic partner, the Blue Ridge Parkway Foundation, to purchase shakes for the roof this winter, get those onsite and acclimated to the environment, and begin installation in the spring. If everything falls into place and the weather cooperates, we could see a new roof on the mill building in early 2025, which kicks off around Memorial Day, for the 2025 visitor season, that is. Complex planning and compliance have been initiated for other rehabilitation projects at the site, including the pond dredging, and some of that is listed on the screen. However, timelines for remaining projects are further out and dependent upon available funding. Next slide, please. So we will wrap things up here. Our commitment to meeting the National Park Service mission is very alive and well, and again, we appreciate you providing this time as part of your agenda this evening. Thank you again. We really value our relationships with all of our neighbors, like all the residents here in Patrick County. So thank you so much, and now we'll take any questions if you have any.
Does anyone have any questions?
Is the restaurant at Mayberry Mill, does it meet Virginia health code?
It does.
It does?
Yes, it does.
Is it air-conditioned?
You know, that's a good question.
I wonder if that's one of the issues because, you know, we live in a society where everybody wants their house 68 degrees here right now. I taught AG, I still teach AG in a shop that was not air-conditioned until like two years ago. It hurt me a lot with enrollment, but you know, that's one of those things that, like I said, everybody's 68 degrees here right now, and they're like, oh, we have to go in there and sit where it's not air-conditioned or the screen windows up?
Yeah, the dining room is not, that is true. The retail space and part of the kitchen does have, I think the kitchen has a window unit, and I think the, I don't want to say something that's incorrect, but you're right that the dining area is not.
I don't think it is.
Yeah, it's not.
At least, wasn't the last time I was there.
It definitely could use some upgrades, for sure.
Is there any attempt to bring any of the, back, I forget what slide it is, talking about what has been open and what's closed over the years?
Yeah.
Trying to get back the Rocky Knob cabins or anything like that?
Yes, that's.
Is there some option at some point, if anybody really wanted to jump in?
That is a great question. Last year, we did publish something called a request for expressions of interest for a historic lease at Rocky Knob cabins, Bluffs Lodge in North Carolina, and Otter Creek Restaurant up in Bedford, Virginia, and we did receive some initial interest. So what that means is we will be publishing a leasing opportunity for all three of those sites this, probably next calendar year. It was delayed slightly because of Hurricane Helene, but those actually are drafted, so you can anticipate seeing an opportunity for a historic lease, which looks slightly different, but provides a little bit more freedom and a business opportunity for someone who might be interested in taking on that site.
Did you receive any feedback from potential vendors about issues with requirements or anything like that that would constrain them to make it less attractive than any other place?
With potential vendors, we did not, but we have heard public comments that range from the federal minimum wage requirement to needed upgrades in the building, to other requirements that are insurance requirements, for example, that the federal government requires, but nothing specific from anyone who came to the site visit as a potential vendor.
Is there any expectation that there'll be any changes to those solicitations in the future?
I wouldn't know. There's no expectation currently, but you know, under the new administration, there's no telling, I guess, is my answer to that.
Any other questions?
We certainly greatly appreciate it and look forward to all the renovations, and it's nothing like the Parkway.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your time. Thank you.
So next, we've got a discussion on our 2025 Board of Supervisors Retreat. So in the past, it's just kind of been left up to whatever our administrator sets up for us, so I think it's time to have a conversation.
Add to that. Aside from that, you know, in light of recent events, I think roles and responsibilities have been in a gray area and some boundaries have been faded, so I would like to request a block of instruction on roles and responsibility of the individual supervisor, the responsibility of the board as a whole, and that of the administration and our structure. I know VACO does this at conferences, but we all can't always get to the conferences to get that up. Plus, I think the community is also unsure about the specific roles of the individual supervisor, the board as a whole, and the administration. So by having this at a retreat, then of course, it's open to the public, and that'll give the public the opportunity to see and hear and have some of that training along with us. I would also like to request block instruction on communication, media, social media, communication with the public, with each other, and also with our administration and our departments. There's a lot of fine lines, and it kind of goes back to the roles and responsibilities as to left and right limits, you know, where does it come from? And I think we all could always use some work with communication, again, whether it be on social media, whether it be with the media, whether it be with each other, and out into the public. I would also like for us to have a discussion on our financial policies and kind of going back to some of the topics earlier, to identify those reserve funds, what they're spent on, how to, basically to improve those policies, and look at those policies and have those definitions as to what we spend it on, how we spend it, make sure we stay between that 15% and 20% that's recommended. And I'd like to have a discussion legislatively. So, you know, we have enrichment, where, you know, they discuss various topics, and so part of our long-term vision is, well, this is where we would like the county to be, this is where we'd like the county to grow, and what do we need from the state? And, you know, what advocacy do we need our legislators to advocate for Patrick County with? So I'd like to have that conversation, and then also a conversation with our boards and committees, what we serve on, what we sit on, and what we can do to increase and improve the volunteerism and get people to serve. This is just my thoughts, my feelings, and now I would like to open the floor up to board members to agree, disagree, add to, or the conversation to shape our, and then after that, we'll discuss time, budget, when, all that, the particulars. But for right now, what would you like to see?
Well, you hit pretty much everything I was going to talk about, which is, number one, for the late setting legislative agenda, which is primarily about lobbying state-level lawmakers on topics such as mitigating the effects of unfunded mandates, providing resources that impact the most vulnerable in our county. Very important at state level. I'll see if we can get some of these issues straightened out. Environmental issues and state legislation that infringes on our local authority, such as the solar issue, that the states, some people in the state are going to try to take that over, and I don't think that's right. I think that should be a county-level issue. Set financial policy, county financial policies are guidelines and goals that guide how a county manages its finances. They should be formulated to ensure that the county's funds are managed responsibly and in a way that promotes long-term financial stability. If we have them, they haven't been communicated, so we need to come up with some kind of comprehensive policy. And of course, number three was formulate planning implementation of an unrestricted reserve policy. You touched on that as well. It's very important. It takes the opinions out of it, it takes feelings out of it, it sets a solid policy so when these issues come up, people understand what their reserve is intended for, what the law intends it to be, and how it can be used. And my fourth one was de-politicizing the appointments to the various boards, councils, and commissions. Appointing volunteers based on political affiliation, old-boy network connections, memberships of various cliques or cliquett groups, or based on personal biases acts as a barrier to county efficiency and effectiveness. We should come up with a solution to this issue and stop gating qualified people who wish to serve the community. So that should be a subject I hope we can sit down and talk about.
I'll take a pause. I see Ms. Shuff's down there writing as fast as she can write. Any other comments?
I'd like to discuss a couple of things, specifically economic development, and make sure that the board and economic development is in the same ballpark and talking. I think sometimes there's some disconnect between what's going on, and I think that's something that we really need to nail down better, as well as EMS services. We need to have a clear projection of what we're going to need in the future and start planning ahead for these things and get them in a budget.
And maybe those are topics that would go under our long-term vision, you know, where we see our EMS in the next couple of years, where we do see economic, and Mr. House has done an amazing job. I know he's just taken that over, and a lot of things are growing, so perfect timing for those discussions. Anything else, Mr. Wood?
I think I'll go with it.
Mr. Kendrick?
Yeah.
All right. So next, timing. You know, I think, you know, especially with some of these, the training for roles, responsibilities, communication, some of these policies, I would like to see us do it sooner rather than later. We've got a new year, we've got new, a new fresh, a new start, and this training, I think, would be key for our new year and for a new beginning. And this is almost a segue into the next topic about our 2025 meeting schedule, but what are your thoughts on timeframe, January, February? And I guess it depends on how quick our county administrator can put things together. And I'm also going to assume it depends on, so we've got, what, let's see, about seven, eight topics that we've mentioned. Is that something we can do in an eight-hour, a 10-hour day? Just exactly what that looks like? So is the administration kind of puts this together, lines facilitators up, can come back to the board to see what we look like time-wise, and are we within our budget that we've allocated for a retreat? And if we're outside of those, then we can come back and see what we can narrow down to get the most from our retreat. Any other thoughts or comments?
So at the next, at the January meeting, would you even like for us to bring back some dates that we have a facilitator lined up?
That sound good? Yes. And with that, we'll move into our January 2025 meeting. So Ms. Shuff has brought to us the possibility of having a work meeting on January the 6th so that we can use that meeting to elect a chairperson, a vice-chairperson, the adaptation of rules of procedure to approve the 2025 Board of Supervisors meeting schedule and to approve the committee appointments. A lot of that is housekeeping for the new year. The pro side to that is that when we come to our business meeting, we already have this taken care of and can get straight to business. Some potential issues is, you know, what we decide on, do we want to have a work meeting at the end of January to discuss budget? Do we want to do, try to have our retreat in January? If so, we're meeting like four times in January. So what's the board's feel for that?
I'm thinking we need to push the retreat off at least till February. January's going to be tough, just because of what you're saying. If looking at three meetings in January are any possible.
Right. See, if, in the past, we've always rolled the housekeeping piece at the beginning of the meeting, which extends, makes for a long meeting. So it's up to the board, do we want to just continue to do it in the same meeting, or do we want to have this January 6th meeting to take care of the housekeeping?
I think, I think we should have an actual reord meeting to separate from the business media. Any thoughts, Mr. Kendrick?
Well, it don't really matter to me, but it don't usually take too long in a regular meeting, and that's just an extra meeting we have for short.
Mr. Wood, any thoughts?
I kind of agree with Mr. Marshall. It'd be nice to not be pushed. It seemed like last year we rolled through it. The other thing I would like is if we can get a list of all of the committees and when they meet and all of that. I appreciate Mr. Marshall going to a lot of meetings, because I still work, you know, eight till whenever the cows are fed, so, you know, a long day. So, you know, I appreciate him doing that, but just see when the schedules and everything's ours, so, you know, those of us that still have a few more years for retirement can attend those if needed.
And that's something I guess we can put out in a packet if we do go with that six meeting. Mr. Oden, you have?
I'm fine with doing a separate meeting. It probably would be more beneficial to give us a little more discussion time and to tread up, instead of trying to jam everything into a regular meeting.
I think, I agree. I think it'd give us the opportunity to take our time, to think things through, and if we could get a packet with the committees, who's on the committees.
Vacancies.
And, so this, yes, so this would be the board members' committee appointments, but still to know, so like the planning commission, I know, is pretty light, and so whoever's assigned to the planning commission, they go in there knowing that, okay, we need to grow that.
Because it's a fresh start at the beginning of the year, so all of us know exactly where we're standing with these boards.
All right. Sounds good. So, do I have a motion to schedule a January 6th meeting at 6:00 PM to discuss the election of chairperson, vice-chair, the adoption of our rules, the, our meeting schedule, our 2025 meeting schedule, and the approval of our committee appointments and just?
I move to schedule the Board of Supervisors organizational meeting on January 6, 2025 at 6:00 PM.
All right, so I have a motion on a second.
Second.
Have a motion on a second. Mr. Wood, Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Wood?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well. So we'll schedule a January 6th meeting, January 6, 2025, for that purpose. And next, we have Mr. Mike McGinnis, our facilities director, to talk with us about the circuit court security needs.
Good evening. On September 23rd, I received an email from the Maintenance Department concerning the judge Brink's wanting some work done in his courthouse. I talked to Morgan Booth, who was overcome, trying to get bids to do some work that the judge had asked her, so I was able to take the paperwork and the bids that they had gave me, put together a a statement of work that the judge wanted. He based this on the, excuse me, I should have started with that. He based that on the U.S. Marshal report on July 19th, when they came in and did an assessment of the building. I guess there was an assault in the courthouse before I was here. And so the U.S. Marshals did a security assessment and made recommendations, and that's what Honorable Judge Brink's wanted us to do. The problem with the original bid package was it was not apples to apples. It was oranges to oranges. There's different UL levels and bulletproof glass and bulletproof walls. One company bid like a UL 1, and what the judge was looking for was something around a UL 3, just a different thickness of wall, if you will. So we put those bids back out to the companies that had bid it previously. We received those bids back. In the meantime, we did a lead paint and asbestos test in the courthouse to make sure that if there was construction, it wouldn't be there. That came back positive on our behalf. And also, we installed five forced-entry glasses that he wanted on the side of the building in the rear where his clerk sat, so someone would not be able to throw a brick. It's not bulletproof. It's a forced-entry glass. So we had that installed as well. We received the bids. We got the bid back, and I believe you all have it in the packet. And I checked with Ms. Lori, and I think I'll have these figures proper. There's $30,297.95 left in the ARPA interest funds. The rest would come from the reserves, and what we have already spent with the asbestos lead paint test and the forced-entry glass, that already came out of the ARPA funds. I did meet with the judge, like I said, personally, made sure he was happy with exactly what he got. I kept the emails to make sure I can go back, and he was exactly, the foyer is opening up nine to 12 feet. In the foyer, when you go up the steps, there'll be two electronically controlled steel doors there. And then going into the clerk of court office, the overview, that wall will go back approximately four feet. That will be a bulletproof wall with a bulletproof window and a steel door. So he was concerned, and that's what I did, then presenting it to you.
Um, thank you for all that work. I know it's a lot to dig into and go through. So do we have a recommended action?
Well, I would assume.
To approve and award the area to high construction?
Yes, sir, to. I'm sorry, Mr. Stein. Yeah, I didn't mean to repeat what he said. Yes, sir. Yes. I'll say something on the personal, and I probably shouldn't, and it'll probably get in trouble, but the judge was, honestly, he was very, a very good steward of funds. I mean, I don't think the judge asked for anything, you know, that absolutely was extravagant. He was, he does his very best, it seemed, to keep money in the Patrick County without trying to rake us over the coals. He didn't ask for a whole lot, if you looked at the U.S. Marshal report. That's just personal, but he was a very honorable man, I felt.
Do you have a copy of the marshal's report?
I do, sir.
Can we get a copy of that?
Of course.
Of course.
It says the only bid are received.
Sir?
Were there more bids or just this one?
We only got the one back. Two companies, sir, originally bid it. The one company said they wanted to bid it, but they were too busy, so they did not. The company that you have right in front of you, Hyatt Construction, he bid that job in February this year. The other company bid that job in September '23, so it's been over a year. Hyatt had not gone up on price. The price that you see is exactly what Hyatt bid originally as well. I think that it was just confusion. This is over a two-year project, and it's sort of sat, and you know, Morgan Booth is excellent at what she does, but, you know, she didn't have the knowledge, and it spent a lot of time studying the bulletproof glass and walls. And so I think it just sat, didn't gain any traction, and then we gained traction.
Do we have any floor plans or anything to go along with the proposal?
We did no engineering drawings, sir. You could see that Hyatt's bid, it's pretty simple in a way. That foyer would be nine by 12, so that wall, when you walk in there, that goes back to the right-hand side, that wall's about three foot 10 inches. It don't move it back. So structurally, the only thing they're doing is moving that wall back. And with the report, you'll see that the concern was egress, if something happened in the courthouse for the safety of the citizens to be able to get out of the building in expeditiously manner. It was too tight. It was too close. So it was a choke point. And so, and then they put two steel doors. So structurally, the building's staying the same, except for that one wall's moving right around three feet 10 inches. But there's no engineering drawings. What he has in the bid, we checked the specs, we wrote them up, we gave them to the contractors. We did the walkthrough on a Monday, not to, excuse me, on a holiday, so we didn't disturb anybody in the court at that time. There was no one there, and we went in and did it that time.
With no more than what we have, can we even get a building permit to get this done?
I'm sorry, sir.
Can we get a building permit to even get this done?
Can we?
Yeah.
Yeah, the contractor will do that, sir. Yes, sir. And I did also ask Jason, our county.
Building inspector.
Yeah, thank you, the building inspector. Jeez, I'm not real bright this evening. I apologize. I asked him to walk the job with me, too. And I'll share it with you. We looked at it, and we thought, well, is this something we can do in-house, right? And we looked at it, and we looked at it. The problem with that was is we're not sure if that's a load-bearing wall. Jason and I walked it. We went underneath the building, we looked. And the other thing is, is dealing with bulletproof walls, UL level 3, it'll take a .44 Magnum bullet three times to penetrate that. You know, we don't have any experts in that field. And drywalling, in general, they can drywall, but you'd see it. And it's definitely with a wall as thick as bulletproof UL 3 level, bulletproof walls, it's very hard to work with. You would need diamond blades to cut that, you know. And honestly, we did assess that. So Jason and I did look at that, and we talked about it, and we just didn't feel comfortable. And that's no ding on the maintenance people. They're busy. They do a great job. Robbie does fantastic.
How, all of this is in the, when you're saying the foyer, you're talking about downstairs?
Yes, sir.
Where you access right to the clerk's office area upstairs?
Yes, sir.
So we're not doing anything to the actual courtroom itself upstairs?
No, sir. The only thing they're doing is when you hit that first platform, there'll be, the platform will be there, there'll be a door, steel door, to get through the clerk, and there will be a door on that door that goes up that stairwell.
And my last question, I almost promised it's my last one. It says we're going to install sprinklers on the new construction.
Yes, sir.
That's not going to go anywhere near where all of our deeds and records and all of that are.
No, sir. Where that wall goes back three foot 10 inches, those, they're, they end there. They have to move it back. They have to cut back, so.
I just knew when we had the jail upstairs, we had trouble in the past with water coming down that shouldn't have been coming down.
Right, sir. No, they're just moving the basic, the sprinklers are probably, I would guess, 12, 13 inches. And when they move that wall back, they'll just have to cut it and put the nauses back on. Same with the electric, same with the telephone cords, and anything else in the wall, they will move, sir.
There was an additional $35,000 proposed for the chairlift?
Yes, sir.
Is that?
No, sir. What it was is Judge Brink's asked me to have the contractors, if they wouldn't mind throwing an addition on there, just to see, because they have a hard time with handicapped people accessing the courthouse. So we were not able to put, and I forget the pitch, I think it's a 10 to 1, 12 degree. I think you're not able to put a ramp there so someone would be able to access that. So that contractor said, hey, if you wanted additional job, we'd be able to put an elevator in there to bring them up. But I didn't tell the judge until you approved this that this was approved, right? I was waiting for y'all. I'm not stupid. But I wanted to make sure if you approved it, then at that time, I would say, hey, sir, that's $35,000. But that was just an extra, sir. That was not part of the bid. And hopefully, I believe it's listed if you looked at that.
It is listed as an option.
Yes, sir. Do I have any other questions, sir?
These funds are already budgeted, correct?
Sir?
These funds are already budgeted, correct?
Sir, that, well, they're not budgeted. They're coming out of the ARPA funds, the interest from ARPA, and then the rest will come from the reserves.
When it was originally budgeted last year, actually the year before, it was all going to be coming from reserves. But since we have that extra ARPA interest this year, we can use that toward it.
Is that money that's got to be spent before the end of the year?
No, we've already spent that money before the end of the year. These are now just general funds earmarked for ARPA expenditures we hadn't paid for yet.
Okay.
Any other question, sirs, gentlemen?
Probably dumb question, but that grant for the work on the courthouse, it ain't no way we could tie this in without it, is it?
No. This would be more security, and it doesn't increase tourism or have the historic observation fee for it. So I've looked at that, but I would need to look at a security grant more so, and this did not come up until after, so it'd be entirely.
If nothing else, we greatly appreciate your time and.
Yes, sir.
Getting this up, spun up on this.
Mr. Overby, how do you, how would you like me to get this copy to you?
You can just email it. That'd be great.
I don't have, I'll scan it. We have a scanner.
That's cool.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you. If no further questions, I'll take a motion. And is the motion for the initial bid and not the alternate? Is that?
It's the current bid, sir.
All right, so for the.
It's the current bid that we received. You have that in front of you.
So the current bid without the alternate for the chairlift?
Correct. The alternate, that would be just so.
Something extra.
To look into.
Okay.
And what that, that is a layer bid, sir.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
So I have a motion and a second call for a vote, Mr. Marshall?
Yeah, I remember when Dan came in here a couple of years ago talking about this and requesting it. It's very reasonable. So, yes.
And I've even heard of localities, the judge getting fed up with the county and ordering a whole new courthouse being built, so. All right, I'm sorry, call for a vote, Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Kendrick?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Aye.
Mr. Overby?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well.
Thank you, Judge. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. All right. And next, under new business, Mr. Overby requested a discussion on the foyer processes. Mr. Overby?
Okay. First of all, who is our foyer officer?
Amy Walker.
Okay. And have you both received training in order to be foyer officers?
We go through the foyer training.
Why, why did we send the last foyer request that Ms. Hall made to the county attorney?
Normally, we do send them through the county attorney unless it's something just very, very basic. But Ms. Walker, I think, did send them to Mr. Fitzgerald. Do you want to respond to that?
Yeah, the foyer request was sent, and there was a question about what should be produced. And so I conducted a review of the documents, determined whether anything should be exempted, and we made certain redactions and then produced as much as was required.
Why were there no exemptions noted?
Well, we redacted certain.
Yeah, but when you do a foyer request, a response to a foyer request, you're required to note the exemptions on the request if you do a redaction. So why was there no redactions?
Did we note?
No, there was no, if they were just redacted, it was not noted.
I mean, that doesn't follow the requirements of the law.
Can you point me to where?
I don't have them in front of me, but I've reviewed them, and there were several areas where there were redactions and there were no notations at all. So I'm just wondering why it was redacted.
Okay, well, I didn't, I wasn't aware that we needed to note, not where the.
I mean, you're our legal counsel. You don't know that you're supposed to put an exemption for a redaction?
Well, can you point me to where the part of the code that you're talking about?
You're the expert on the code, right?
No, but you're the one telling me. You're the one telling me that I'm supposed to provide the exemption.
Okay. So what work did you do for 6.2 hours?
Well, what I just described, reviewed the documents, determined, you know, reviewed and comparison with the code about what can be exempted, or what should be exempted, made certain redactions, and then provided those to Ms. Hall.
So you knew that there were redactions that were made. You made the decision to redact items for certain reasons, but you didn't put why they were redacted on the response?
That's correct.
There was a duplicate foyer request submitted by Mr. Marshall in his personal capacity. Why was Mr. Marshall not charged the same amount or a split amount between what Ms. Hall requested and what Mr. Marshall requested?
I cannot respond to that. I did not respond to Mr. Marshall's request. I'll have to check with Ms. Walkers.
First of all, I'd like to make a motion to vacate the foyer charges for Debbie Hall's foyer request. She was charged $1,294.71. That's my motion.
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Chairman, I call for debate on a motion.
I agree. I think we need to know all the particulars and the ins and outs. I don't think that's something that we need to vote on tonight. I think that's something we need to.
Well, we need to debate it in the very best. I mean, I think that would start with me. Okay. There's lots of reasons, lots of times that, you know, funds are expended unnecessarily. Even attorney fees at $190 per hour. One of the most recent ones that kind of shocked me was a former supervisor who, during Mr. Overby's campaign, decided that I did not have the, since I was a sitting supervisor, that I had left my constitutional rights, and especially my first minimum right to free expression, at the door. And she caused the attorney for Mr. Overby's, on the subject of Mr. Overby's campaign, to be asked whether I had the legal right to have an opinion and publish an opinion. And I believe that was at least an hour billable. That's $190 that went to your campaign. Not from you directly, but now that's my definition of money not well spent. This money is very necessary to take these. There's personal things. There was HIPAA things. I think somebody mentioned HIPAA back here. There was HIPAA things in those messages. There was things that had to be redacted. Now, there's no requirement in the law that I'm aware of or any notation on a redaction. The attorney is necessary because he recognizes that when you're talking about children, or you're talking about family, or you're talking about medical, those things need to be redacted. Nobody here has that expertise. That's an attorney, and that's what the county attorney is hired for, is to protect the county from litigation. And as someone mentioned here, especially the HIPAA, they protected us from that litigation if they'd gone out to the paper and been public. Give my two cents.
My two cents is work had to be done on it. And if, it's tax dollars that go to pay for that information. And, you know, is that what we want to put our tax dollars towards? Because somebody has to take their time to go through all those emails, to go through all the, everything that's been submitted. And so that's, that's time that somebody works through lunch, that's time that somebody has to work overtime to get that information in that short period of time. So that bill is required or is acquired through somebody's work.
But it's their job already to do. I don't see where you are.
It takes away from their daily duties.
I understand that, but they're not going to receive the funds.
But the county has to pay for those overtimes and for that work.
So you're saying that anybody that would do any of this work has a packed schedule where they could not do this work without incurring additional cost?
Well, if they, if they had.
I just don't believe it.
If they had, you've got how much time to respond to the foyer request? It's like.
Five business days.
So five business days. So if you had weeks to work on it, then I'm sure they could find the time.
I just don't want the foyer process to be used. I just don't want the FOIA process to be used as a deterrent for people to request information. I don't think that the charges that were assessed were commensurate with the work that was done. I don't believe that we got our money's worth from the county's attorneys to do that job if they couldn't even cite the requirement for the redactions.
Do we need to see a breakdown of the work done?
No, I think it's so simple. I don't need to see one. I mean, it's really simple to comprehend.
Well, I think, personal opinion, the first email I saw about the price was $200 minimum. If it's going to jump from 200 to almost 1,400, it probably should have been some notification to see if they wanted to continue with it or a little better estimate on it.
I will ask Ms. Hall, if you don't mind answering, you don't have to, I'm just asking you. Were you, I know you received notice that it was going to be in excess of $200, but were you given any estimate that it might be in addition, you know, north of $1,000?
I was not, and I checked multiple times for updates.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate you answering that.
Any further discussion?
I'm very concerned if we start expending taxpayer dollars on every FOIA request, we're going to be having a blizzard, which is fine, but I don't think we should be expending. Our job here is to be not stewards of a group that has a bone to pick. We're stewards of the taxpayer money. So taxpayer pays the money, we should handle that responsibly. If we were to write this off and have the taxpayers pay it, I think that's irresponsible.
I don't think we need to use the FOIA process as a weaponization in order to prevent FOIA requests. And I think that's more of what this represents. I personally work for the federal government where we have FOIA requests. We have a FOIA officer. We don't charge a dime for a FOIA request. And I don't see why we would either, especially if it's something that is readily available. This is the individual's job to produce the information. I just, I don't see where the charges, I mean, I don't see where they make sense for the information that was produced.
Mr. Overby, I agree with you for a lot of that, but I disagree on the point that there shouldn't be any charge. We, you know?
Oh, that's my next motion.
Okay, I was going to say somehow, you know, somebody had to collect all of the information and then scan it and make it into a usable document to provide to the person that had the FOIA request. But the, I definitely think that we should have made notification when we jumped from 200 to 12, 13, I can't remember the exact number, you said 12?
My camera was 79.
1294.
1294.
And I think this also goes along with the fact that if we were being transparent, we would not be getting flooded with FOIA requests. The main reason that this FOIA request was, the main reason that this FOIA was requested was to shed light on situations that are being conducted behind closed doors or individually between certain members of government. And if things were being conducted in the open, this FOIA request would have never been requested in the first place.
Yes. Yes.
Any other comments?
Need to talk to the sheriff, too. I understand somebody put a FOIA request over there, something that should have been a button push on a computer, 700 some dollars, just to answer how many cars we had. They had no idea how many cars they had or where they were at.
So if there's no further conversation about this?
Just fairness.
We do have a motion and a second. So I call for a vote, Mr. Marshall?
No.
Mr. Wood?
Could someone please restate the motion? Is it the entire, the $1,294?
Just this occasion, the $1,294.71.
I'll vote yes, simply until we establish a better way of charging. It seems more equitable for everyone.
Mr. Overby?
Aye.
Mr. Wood, I'm torn as well. Initially, I would say no. However, I do agree that where they weren't informed and that excessive was blindsided.
If I was tagged with another $1,000, I'd have changed my mind real fast, Ted.
I agree with what Mr. Wood says, so I will vote yes as well. You skipped me, but I vote aye. I'm sorry. My mind's a little bloody clear. All right. So next, we move into old business. So the proposed dangerous dog vaccine fees. Ms. Schuff, you want to explain that, or would you like for me to explain?
Either one is fine.
Okay. So we had a request to do an ordinance as dogs are being hailed over from court, that the county has the responsibility of upkeeping and maintaining. It was requested that we come up, the animal control officer requested that we come up with an ordinance to force the owner to pay for the upkeep of these animals, because that's something that the county absorbs. So we asked for some specific terminology and some specific wording. Our attorneys got back with us and said that because it's a court function and a court action, that we cannot create an ordinance for that. However, we can request that the animal control officer work through the Commonwealth's attorney to seek reimbursement through the court. Does that summarize it in a nutshell?
Not exactly.
Okay, please.
Maybe we should read it.
Please take over.
I'm sorry.
To make sure I've got everything correct.
So I'll just read basically what you just said to us.
Okay.
So because the minutes of the October 21st, 2024 meeting reflect that the Board of Supervisors voted unanimously to proceed with the composition of a policy or ordinance that requires the owner of a dangerous dog to be responsible for the cost associated with caring for the dog in custody. The county attorney, Mr. Fitzgerald, advised that this topic should be readdressed. So we are recommending that the request for the ordinance be denied and that the board and that the board direct the animal control officer to seek reimbursement for vaccination and care of dangerous dogs through the court system, through the Virginia.
Thank you for getting me straight there. Appreciate it. Thoughts, comments from the board? If not, I'll take a motion to, I'll take a motion to approve that the request for the dangerous dog fees ordinance be denied and a resolution be prepared for the animal control officer to seek reimbursement, or to deny the motion for the request of the dangerous dog vaccination fee ordinance be deemed that there's no resolution and be prepared to seek vaccination and care of the cost reimbursement, or to table the motion.
I move that the request for a dangerous dog vaccination fees ordinance be denied and a resolution be prepared to direct the animal control officer to seek reimbursement for vaccination and care costs through the court system.
So thank you. I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second. So I'll call for a vote. Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Wood?
Aye.
Mr. Overby?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well. So we'll get that back to the animal control officer to seek reimbursement. Next, the FCC to include radio news and local television media. So this came to us from a concerned citizen from last month who was having issues with their satellite provider, not being able to provide them their local to local channels on their satellite. So a lot of back and forth, and I greatly appreciate a citizen, I don't know if they want me to mention their name or not, so I won't, but a citizen reached out to me and said they worked on this with Rick Voucher, is it Voucher, my sound? Back in 2004 to create this legislation. So, you know, that's already been legislatively settled. And so the satellite company should provide that. I think the citizen went back and forth several times. The satellite provider wasn't, so I think he ended up resolving things in a different way. If anybody has any questions with this, it is S-H-V-E-R-A. That was the Reauthorization Act of 2004. You can Google it or feel free to send me an email, and I will send you the documents that I have that covers that. So that the satellite prescriber can get you your local TV stations. Any questions or comments from the board about that topic? All right, so no action is required. So again, if anybody has any questions on that, just shoot me an email. You can pull my email off the county website, and I'll be glad to forward you the information I have on the Chevron Act. And now we go into reports, the administrators' report.
So just to mention that the county offices will be closed on December 23rd through the 25th for the Christmas holiday and on January 1st for the New Year's holiday. The transfer station will close the 24th, the 25th, and January 1st.
Mr. Marshall?
November 19th, I met with Mike McGinnis, our facilities director, for a tour of the transfer station and animal shelter. I think this is a good practice, and I would like to see every supervisor tour our facilities and speak with county staff members. This can only assist all of us in our decision making. Later that afternoon, I attended the Board of Social Services meeting. It was refreshing to attend a meeting where all members are working together with positivity. This stands in stark contrast to what was occurring just a year ago. Our newest member that was appointed at the Board of Supervisors meeting just the evening prior hit the ground running and organized an angel tree for our county's foster children so that they would be sure to receive something for Christmas and know that folks in Patrick County do care about them. Those who voted for this appointment should be proud, as this stands as a fantastic example of what can be achieved when politics and biases are taken out of board or committee appointments. November 20th, I attended the Lunch with Leaders event. This is a yearly presentation that is quite informative, and I hope the Board of Supervisors will be well represented there next year. That afternoon, I attended the CMPT meeting. Later that evening, I attended the Stewart Town Council meeting. November 21st, I attended the newcomer Mixer and Pickle and Ash, was quite a few new faces to welcome to our county. One attendee who watches our Board of Supervisors meetings on YouTube made what I think is a great suggestion that the county should have a public relations person that can speak on behalf of the county in an official capacity. This would likely go a long way toward eliminating much of the erroneous information that circulates on a regular basis regarding official county business. I am not suggesting this be a new hire. We have a remarkable staff, and I'm sure we could find someone to handle this if we try. Later that same evening, I attended the Tourism Advisory Council meeting.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Kendrick?
I also went to the Meet Your Local Leaders meeting that's shame or commerce held at the Star Theater on November 20th. We've got an EDA meeting this Wednesday. Went to West Piedmont meeting, I forgot the date on that one, but anyway, last week. And Patrick County was mentioned quite a bit at West Piedmont, several grants West Piedmont's got. The Moonshine Trail was mentioned, and James was mentioned, and a good positive meeting. And that's it.
Mr. Wood?
I guess I haven't attended any meetings since the last time, so nothing reported this time.
Mr. Overby?
Shortly after being sworn in last Monday, I sat down with Mr. Castle for a couple of hours to go over a lot of EMS issues. And it was very enlightening to see the things that are going on in this county with EMS. And I believe we have a lot of work that really needs to be done in that area. And that's all I've got to report.
And thank you. Unfortunately, I missed my step, and I missed the West Piedmont meeting. However, I did attend the Regional Recreation Group, the surveys that they took about to improve recreation opportunities in parks here in the county. I think that was some great focus work that will certainly funnel some funds into our county to improve our parks and recreation. Also attended a meeting with Virginia Career Works, basically the, Career Works. So they've got a lot in store, too, to build and grow our county's workforce, provide jobs and job openings, and lead people to jobs and help find jobs for our citizens. And that's all I've attended since our last meeting. I also have, and thank you, Mr. Marshall, for bringing this to our attention. I think us as a board should sing this four-year-old Noah Beasley's praises. So Noah Beasley and his mother, Christian, started a GoFundMe campaign to benefit the Patrick County Animal Shelter, and they raised $2,410 for their efforts, and it was featured on WDBJ 7th on November 9th. So we greatly appreciate that extra mile, Noah and Christian. Thank you. And that's all I have. Anything else while we're? All right. At this time, we are ready to move into the closed session.
I move the Board convene and close meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2, 3711A1 to discuss and consider the following. Department of Social Services at large, planning commissioner at large, Tom Stephen, Dan River, Public Service Authority, Dan Rivers, Stormwater Board of Appeals.
Personnel.
Personnel and other personnel matters.
All right, so I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Wood?
Aye.